Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the September 16th Board of Education meeting. Could we have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Sit here.
Sam.
Here, thank you. The first item on the agenda is written communication. Dr. Beavis.
We have no written communication at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, we are already at the information section and we have a really nice award.
Yeah.
Recognition.
Come on up, Mary. Mary, and I know this routine because this is one of those habits you would love to be able to form and we are forming a habit here. Once again, our business department, this school district, has won the ASBO International Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. This would be for the latest fiscal year 18. ASBO is the Association of School Business Officials. It is a national organization. It's actually an international organization. It's highly regarded itself for being the gold standard in the profession, but this honor is the gold standard in the award that they give. To give you an idea about this award of excellence, this has actually been offered now for more than 40 years. ETHS first won this award 11 years ago, and this is the 11th consecutive year of winning this certificate of excellence in financial reporting. Now, to give you an idea, there are over eight, well over 800, it was in the range of like 840 school districts in the state of Illinois, it's somewhere in that range now. There is some consolidation taking place. Only 60 school districts, not even 10% of the school districts in the state of Illinois, received this award. And we not only received it this year, but we also have received it for 11 straight years. We're very, very proud of this. We're very proud of our business department, but it is a team effort to be able to maintain this kind of financial status. I look at other people in the room who are part of this, and Mary, to you and everybody affiliated with this award, I think I just said this a year ago.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Awesome. (applause). It's always a great way to start a meeting. Thank you. Thank you, Mary, and certainly if you would extend to your staff how much we appreciate the hard work, we don't take it lightly. 11 consecutive years.
11 consecutive years.
That's...
And Kendra is not here tonight. As you all know, Kendra's our Assistant CFO.
Yeah.
She is right in the middle of the audit for the 2019 year, so she's been putting in a lot of hours. I told her to go home. She has a young baby, so I will thank her.
Please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Amazing. All right. So, we are ready to hear a report on our summer curriculum projects.
And that'll be Dr. Beavis.
Set up.
All right. Good evening. As you know, the bulk of our curriculum work occurs in the summer months, and I need a Just a little bit of background, we, our summer projects occur throughout all of our departments. They're aligned to district goals. Student Services did a few projects that were aligned to Goal 2 Well-Being. We also, we had 117 teachers participate. They did 40 projects and we remained within budget. Again, these, this is where our, our teachers keep our curriculum relevant. They, we did a lot of curriculum development this summer. That includes new courses. There was assessment writing done. I'll highlight some of that. And then finally, I'll talk briefly about our curriculum review process and the projects that directly relate. So, one of the things we do annually is new and revised courses. So, this is, this is exactly what connects our new course proposals and course changes to our, to our, the work we do. Last year, we added a cybersecurity course. We added a project Lead the Way Engineering Design and Development. That's the Capstone Project Lead the Way course. We added Wildcat Ensemble and sports-specific training. We were able to complete summer projects in all of those areas. They built out the curriculum and those courses are now up and running. We did some common assessment writing. Specific to two of our courses, I'd like to highlight our Spanish Curriculum Review. That group did integrated performance assessments at all levels of the Spanish curriculum. This came directly out of the curriculum review where students wanted more opportunities to practice their skills in a real-world sort of setting. They wanted to practice their communication skills, and that's exactly what the teachers were able to develop over the summer, and they've started implementing those type of assessments throughout our Spanish curriculum. And also, as part of our ASL 2-2 Honors Program, the teachers took some time to, again, integrate more performance-based assessments into that world language as well. We saw a lot of curriculum review projects. Now, curriculum review is a multi-step process that includes not only quantitative data review, but also focus group qualitative review. And the courses that underwent review over the last couple of years are, three of them are up there. TwoAlgebra did a detailed curriculum review. They worked all summer on integrating the feedback they received from students. In, through, over 50 students participated in focus groups, students who were success, at all different levels of TwoAlgebra, including students who had taken TwoAlgebra earlier in their academic career were successful. We also do focus groups with students who weren't particularly successful in that course. Again, all of this is designed to inform instruction and inform curriculum, and as part of our TwoAlgebra Curriculum Review, teachers integrated more hand, more group work, and they also are, several of those teachers are now piloting new curricular materials with an eye towards scaling that in the subsequent years. They also worked on assessments, aligning their assessments to the SAT test. In our chemistry curriculum review, that team spent a lot of time working on labs and developing common lab experiences and creating a portfolio of, of those labs that can be integrated into the curriculum and instruction for curriculum, for chemistry at all levels. So, that exists as a resource. Students, again, wanted more opportunities for hands-on experiences. In the Spanish Curriculum Review data analysis, teachers really wrestled with both the quantitative data they were receiving and the qualitative data. They were able to revise the curriculum in several ways, one of which was to integrate more opportunities for, to expand. What they heard from students was that the curriculum was primarily focused on Mexican and Spanish culture. So, they spent the summer expanding that, their curriculum to integrate other cultures, other Spanish-speaking cultures into the curriculum. We also took a look at integrating more opportunities for students to communicate across the levels in Spanish as reported by students. They didn't feel comfortable with their speaking skills. So, again, we looked at the curriculum all the way from Spanish 1 all the way through our Advanced Placement Curriculum, and that directly linked to the set, to the final project up there, which was the Integrated Performance Assessments. More opportunities to speak and a way to assess them that's vertically aligned, so that, you know, where you are in Spanish 1, it builds in Spanish 2, Spanish 3, and so on. So, that, that was the bulk of the Curriculum Review Summer Projects. Moving forward, we're going to continue to do curriculum reviews. In fact, today, a team met with our photography teachers to conduct a curriculum review. We're also doing curriculum reviews for our entire computer science sequence, which includes Intro to Computer Science and then goes all the way through to Advanced Placement Computer Science. We'll work on course revisions next summer, continue our assessment writing. I always put professional development. We used to do, use professional development. We used to pay folks to come in in the summer when we were integrating the Chromebooks into instruction. We went one-to-one. We did a lot of time and a lot of professional development around that. We didn't do that this year, but I always like to keep professional development front and center, and again, we will be within budget. Just take a look at our projects and the per-project cost. In 2013, we did 27 projects for $125,000. The per-project cost at that time was $4,640. And this year, you see, what we've done is we've really, we've really, we've really narrowed the per-project cost. In 2019, we did 41 projects, and the average project costs about $2,000. More than half of what it cost in 2013. You may ask, how did we do this? One of the things we did was we capped per-course revision and new courses. New courses and substantial revisions are capped at $3,200 for an entire team, and general course revisions are capped at 2,400. We find that when we cap these projects, people come in under budget consistently. And I had some slides on curriculum review, but those are there if we need them. Open to questions about curriculum, about the summer projects?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Questions? Anybody? Jude?
What type of feedback are you getting from the students who are unsuccessful with algebra? Anything come to mind there or any trends?
Yeah. What we saw was that, you know, students who are unsuccessful in algebra, they point out their, one of the things they are very clear about is that there's a sense of belonging in the classroom. So, they do feel, students do feel a sense of belonging, whether they are successful or not, which was very interesting. We didn't anticipate that finding, honestly. Students are also aware of their skills in math. And one of the things we found that was really telling was that students' mathematical, their, their confidence in math. We ask questions regularly related to how confident are you in math? Students who are more confident, again, that was one of the things that really fell upon, like, were you successful or not successful? So, we're looking at ways to build math confidence. Now, this is asked in a couple of different ways. We get at this through like, are you comfortable and confident working in a group? Are you confident when you raise your hand to answer a traditional question? And what we find out is that if you're not confident, you're not confident. So, we really have to work, we've really, we're really working on that aspect of it.
Other questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
I've found that like, in math curriculum especially, when you're not confident, it starts at a very young age and kind of just builds from there. So, how, how have you been thinking about changing the curriculum so late in the game in like Algebra 2 and how that addresses that?
Yeah, it's interesting. And thank, thank you for pointing that out, Echo. One of the things that we did a while ago was we started to have a different type of focus in our math courses. So, for example, we took Algebra and Entrepreneurship. We also have a Geometry and in Construction program, and those two programs were, while you do learn math at a very high level, you also get to see the daily application of, of those skills. One of the things we're doing with Algebra this year, One Algebra, and we look to expand it next year, is we're integrating some computer science into that, so the students can have a little bit of computer science and programming experience integrated into their Algebra. So, again, it's not a standalone typical sort of math experience. It's a more integrated experience where you see the application. And unfortunately, as we progress into TwoAlgebra and TRIG, it gets more and more difficult. That's part of the reason why we're piloting some materials this year, to see if we can come up with another great idea.
I have a question about the Spanish curriculum enhancements that you're doing. Are you planning to take any of those best practices or any of the learning from that, those conversations and that teamwork that the teachers have been engaged in and translate that, excuse the pun, to other language courses?
Yeah, actually, what's real, what was really interesting about the Spanish project was that it was the first curriculum review we did, and we kind of showed, we showcased that within the World Language Department. So, the World Lang, unlike other departments where we'll go in like with photography, we're only dealing with the teachers who actually teach photography. When we did this with world languages and when we did it with math, we brought in teachers, we did it during department time, during department meetings. So, we actually asked, we opened it up to all the world language teachers when they started drafting the kinds of things they were interested in finding out from students. What are, you know, really, we started with, what do you want to learn from the students? What do you want to learn from the student perspective? That's not in the numbers. We'll get you the numbers. We can give you a ton of numbers, right? A lot of quantitative data, but really, what do you want to learn about the experience for students? So, they draft questions. So, they drafted questions along with their colleagues in sign language, in French, in German, in Latin. So, they're sitting there, right? In Japanese, they're sitting there and they're, they're, they're contributing to that. They also were present when we went over the findings. And, and, and it's not shocking that it resonated with people across the department around the confidence piece, not, you know, not feeling confident about oral, you know, speaking the language. Far more comfortable writing, which is interesting, it's kind of counterintuitive, because all we hear forever is that the students would, we, we anticipated that there would be a lot of complaints around grammar. You know, oh, the grammar instruction, we have to do grammar. It wasn't that at all. The, the, the concern students had was, I've been taking this for five years and I don't feel confident in my ability to speak it. So, we started to work, so that's where we really doubled down. That also requires a shift though, right? In how we assess. So, that's why we're doing those, those performance assessments, and they're actually doing those across the department and building those in, in other areas. So, yeah, it's not done in isolation, so thanks for that.
When you showed the slide for futures?
Yep.
Is that for next year, next summer? Moving forward?
Moving forward, yeah. We'll, we'll, we'll have some more curriculum review projects. We won't have new courses next year, we're just going to have revisions, and oh boy, well we have, we'll have quite a few of them. That's a teaser for next time. We'll have quite a few revisions. Assessment writing will continue to be a big part of it. And again, we always look to what the professional development is with an eye to that. We didn't have the, the need this summer. We offered, but we didn't have the demonstrated need. People didn't, you know, everybody's been trained on Chrome, so we probably have to look. Aside from onboarding folks, we'll probably have to look in other areas for that, but that is definitely a set aside. So, that is the plan for next summer.
Great. All right. Well, thank you very much. Nice job. All right. Next item is report on the Five Essentials Survey.
And we have a team on this one. Dr. Beavis and Dr. Levy and Dr. Campbell.
Ooh.
So, the three doctors.
Sounds like a winner.
All right. So, thank you. This is going to be our, our update on the Five Essentials. This is a summary of ETHS results. This is very similar to a report we've done in the past. One caveat is that you can look forward to seeing this report annually, because the state of Illinois is now requiring that the Five Essentials be given each year. That creates some amount of survey fatigue, because you will, parents in this community, students, students will be asked annually, we can control for that. Teachers will be asked annually, we're hoping that we maintain similar response rates. But parents, if you have students in multiple schools, you'll be asked annually to fill out surveys for each of those schools. So, we're hoping that we can, you know, we'll, we'll do our level best, but we're concerned about that being annually. It's every, every year now. The headline on this, and I'll just do the headline, because I love to do the headline. And this is the big takeaway. According to the Five Essentials, schools that are at or above benchmark on three or more of the Five Essentials are 10 times more likely to improve than schools that are below that benchmark. ETHS is at or above on four. They don't tell us like, you know, it's 20% or 50, you know, 50 times more likely to improve, but it's significantly, you know, we, we're four and, and, and the goal is three. But I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Levy, who will talk about that. The other highlight of tonight, though, is that we were able to look at supplemental questions for the first time and really extract the supplemental questions that students completed that deal with Goal 2 Well-Being. This is something that if you've been, if you've been at this board table for a while or if you've watched from home or, or read about what we're doing, connecting Goal 2 Well-Being to the Five Essentials has always been something we wanted to do, and we are able to start doing that right now. You can drive now, Carrie.
Okay. Hi, good evening. All right. So, I'll do some background. So, the Five Essentials is a survey that's based on 20, over 20 years now of research. It was done by the Consortium of Chicago School Research, initially developed in elementary schools, and they've progressed it up to high school. We, the very first administration was 2012, 13. So, like Pete says, it defines five essential components of school organization and climate that's related to improving schools. So, Pete's already said, we will be doing this every year now. Our response rate this last year was 76% for students, I don't know if you can hear me, sorry, 74% for teachers and 18% for parents. And here are the five essentials, the five key constructs. Ambitious instruction, which is, comes out of the student survey mostly, and the, the classes are challenging or engaging. Collaborative teachers, these items come out of the teacher survey, and they look to see if teachers collaborate to promote professional growth. Effective leaders, that comes out of the teacher survey. It looks at principals and teachers implement a shared vision for success. Involved families comes out of the teacher, also, let me just tell you where it's. And that one looks at whether or not the entire staff builds strong relationship, external relationships. And then supportive environment is mostly out of student survey, and that looks at whether the school is safe, demanding, and supportive. So, how it's structured, so if I, for example, under the essential for ambitious instruction, there are these four constructs under quality of student discussion, English instruction, math instruction, and academic press. And within each of these four indicators, there's three to eight questions, so it varies by each indicator. And then all of these items, the questions underneath each indicators then are scored to come up with the one score for the essential. So, the score you will see, it's not a percent, they've scaled it. So, they, they have a formula behind this that looks in the number of questions, and it's weighted, and it's weighted by indicator, and then they scale it, re-scale it, so it's on a scale of 0 to 100, and that's where you get the Five Essentials score. So, like Pete said, we're organized for improvement, which is our rating for the past two administrations, and now we'll be doing this every year. So, this is what I was referring to in the score. So, here are the five essentials, and then I put next to it whether or not we're rated more, average, less, and then where it says next to it, so ambitious instruction, we're more, organized more for improvement, and then student lets you know which survey these items come out of. And so, then we have these in our past year, 2018, 19 scores. So, not percentages, they're scores, and then compared to, to previous years. So, you can see where we're more improved for our, organized, excuse me, for ambitious instruction, involved families, and supportive environment. And there's more detail in the report for the indicators underneath in each of those essentials. And then the supplemental results that came out of the student survey that we have access to, these are, connect to our district goal 2 that Pete was mentioning, and well-being that we've highlighted here, and we are rated more for all of them. Student, peer relationships, parent supportiveness, academic, personalism, and then I have descriptions of what the definition is, human and social resources in the community, and social connectedness, and then we're rated average in school safety and emotional health. Now, these are additional questions. The student survey has many questions. These questions are supplemental, they're not connected to a specific essential. These are just additional items. So, they're not connected to any of the key essentials or any of the indicators, they are just in addition, and then they've done a scoring and a rating with these. And I think that was it. Yes. Any questions?
I did, I just had a really quick one to that last point about the supplemental questions. Are those, initially, I was confused in reading this and when you were talking, we have not supplemented the Five Essentials Survey with our questions. These are supplemental questions within the broader Five Essentials. I just think, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, let me, let me, yeah, the answer to that question is yes. These are constructs and questions that were developed by the Five Essentials. Well, I do think your idea is a, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I think that's a great idea if we could supplement with our own questions, that would be great.
We talked about it in the past, I think.
We do that with different surveys.
We do it with other surveys, but not with the 5E.
And rather than, but, but, yeah, I, anyway.
So, no, these are, you know, when, when they score it, when they, you know, look at the constructs for the supplementals, this is where it lands. So, they, they crunch the numbers and do all that.
But it's great, because it does line up with our goal 2, so now we can...
Now, we can measure and move on a few of them. I mean, we obviously have to supplement with other measures as well.
I had a couple others, but somebody else?
I just have one. I, I just wanted to lift up the fact that the response for the parent response, because it's less than 20%, we don't have, right? Their data. So, the involved families is from the teacher's perspective.
Yes.
Which shows more, which is good, but we lack information from parents or data from parents. So, my question is, you know, what have we done and what did we do last year to try to increase the number of response rates? I know it's difficult as a parent having to fill out multiple, but it's essential in order for us to, to really say honestly that our families or our parents are involved in the decision-making, there's a sense of trust and so forth and so on. So, what have we done and what do we plan to do?
Sure. I'll answer it, Pete, and then you can jump in. So, our communications department really helps with this. We actually start our campaign early. As soon as they open the survey, we send out information, email, communication to parents.
Which is when, just to clarify, when the opening of the survey is?
Oh, last year.
For those people watching, so they can mark it on their calendar?
So, that's a great question. Last year, it was supposed to be mid-November around the 16th, and they didn't actually open it until December. This year, it's scheduled for December 10th is when it opens until mid-February, but their communication is no earlier than December 10th. So, this year, it's right before winter break. Last year, they didn't open it. It was supposed to be before Thanksgiving holiday, and it was after that. But we have multiple emails, communications, it's on our website, it's pushed out through social media, through the web app. We even follow up with parents. They have even after winter break all the way up into the deadline for when it closes. And that's consistent, even a little bit more than what we probably have done the previous survey administration.
And we've also had tables at conferences and whenever, whenever we were having any type of community event, we would try to advertise and say, hey, Five Essentials is coming up, we need you to participate. We've done that, and I believe...
And the Welcome Center.
And the Welcome Center. So, any point, point of contact that we have with families during that time, we try to remind them about the Five Essentials.
Can I get a suggestion? This just came up. I just thought about it. When we have, I'm thinking, this is a, basketball is a very busy season, winter sports are very busy with our parents supporting our youth. I know we, at board meetings, I know Eric is always, that's a part of his announcement as well. I don't know how many people actually watch us, but a lot of people. Records. Yeah, they're high.
Very popular, very popular.
But, but if we could take advantage of those social engagements or activities as well, just to, just to try. I mean, I don't know what the number would be, and I know it's hard, but I, I can't, I don't know what to do with this. You know, I don't know what, what to do with the involved families when it's just one-sided, or anything else. Everything else is one, it doesn't include the parent's perspective at all, so...
So, I agree with that 100%, and I think going after the winter sports is a great way to, to do it. I'd just like to add some context. This has been a really difficult thing for high schools in general to do, to get that 20% response rate. I think if you look at the schools that are able to do it, they're primarily elementary schools. So, again, we'll, hopefully, we'll be able to sit here and be able to say, hey, we're reporting it, and we'll probably make some headlines, because most, most high schools... reporting it, and we'll probably make some headlines, because most, most high schools don't get to that threshold. They actually lowered the, they lowered the threshold several years ago from thirty percent down to twenty. So it's a target.
And we're at eighteen.
We're at eighteen.
We're like.
Come on, parents, come on.
It's getting better.
It's getting better.
I think if anybody can do it, we can do it. It's only two percentage points away.
Well, we don't, we, we don't have, during this time, I'm thinking of what's going on in our school, December tenth through mid-February, so we will miss conferences.
That's what I was.
That's too bad.
But concerts.
But we have concerts, we have sports events.
Probably a musical play, something.
And how about, do we immobilize our ambassador, our parent ambassadors around this?
We can look into that.
If we don't, I, I can't imagine why we wouldn't, because we have an enormous crowd of them, I think. And they've all got their own personal networks, and so if we really.
That's a great idea.
You know, say, hey, if each of you could reach twenty families, think, you know, that would be, that could make the difference, right?
And it's all electronic, right? There's no hard copies.
We talk about this, I think every time we've had the five essentials, we've had this identical conversation, but.
Can, can I say something as a parent who didn't complete the survey? So I'm just gonna tell you from a user perspective. Maybe I was a little busy, I was running for school board last spring. I, I feel like the communicate, I went through, when I read the statistic, I went through my email to see, like, what kind of communications was I getting from the school around the five essentials, and I think I was getting it confused with other surveys. And I certainly do feel like I answer a lot of surveys, but I, I think it would help somehow to have something that stands out differently than every other email that you get from ATHS, and you get a lot. And it would be nice if there was some kind of maybe graphic or something that could sort of differentiate it from all the other emails that you get, and something to explain why this information is important and why it helps for parents to complete, and how that data is used, because I, I mean, I just, you know, I don't know why it's important for me, and I had, and I suppose if I had known that the response rate was so low, I would have maybe paid attention and answered the questions, but, you know, I just didn't really think it was imperative for me to do it. And so I think if there's a way to maybe talk to the communications department about how to really embolden the message somehow.
So I think that would all be helpful. I just did a quick little search on the Illinois Report Card, and of our neighboring districts, not a single one of them was able to get there. So I looked at New Trier, Highland Park, now it's north, now it's west, Stevens. I was hoping maybe we could learn something from someone, but we may be trailblazers in that regard.
That's right. We're gonna beat 'em all, okay.
I was just gonna add, we may be dealing with a, a situation regarding access, and do we offer opportunities for parents to actually go online here to do it? Because this may be access, and, you know, we're, we're different than the other school districts, because we're dealing with a range of demographic groups, and some of which are underperforming, and parental engagement could give that a huge boost in terms of partnering with the district.
I actually think that's essential. Jude, that you pointed that out, what we don't want to do is send out a survey, get twenty-three percent of the results, and have everyone who fills that survey out look like me. Right? I think if we isolate race, and if we isolate economics, we need to really go and do a big push to make sure that the twenty percent or twenty-five percent of folks that we do get to respond represent our communities. So point well taken, absolutely.
Go ahead, Carrie.
I mean, we, we do have it in the welcome center during the time, we do have opportunities for families who maybe don't have access to computer, internet, whatever, that it's set up. We have had it set up during that time in there, and we can continue for sure to do that.
Yeah, and there are multiple workstations in the welcome center to allow us to, the ability to do that.
Do we track, do we track the demographics when we get the, get it back?
We have no way of tracking that. This is all done through University of Chicago, Chicago Impact, so who completes the survey? We have no information, and in fact, I don't know if they even have that information. Only patient, I, only information I get is when I know students haven't completed. That's the one I can follow up on. But there also is like, I think you've mentioned the issue of if you have a student at the high school, and at the middle school, at the elementary school, and you're expected to do the survey at each of them, then having, asking a parent to do that same survey three times, I think also might be a challenge, but this may also, some of your ideas that you guys have shared in, in working with communications department to see how we could make it a little bit more important, a little different, we'll work on that for sure this year and see how we do.
So just to follow up on that, I, I think that if there's a way to raise a flag and say they should disaggregate their data, I think that would be really helpful. And then a second idea, just spinning off what Monique said, if we're going to sporting events and concerts and so forth, you know, I know the athletic department has done this, they have iPads where you can do it right there, so, you know, really make it super accessible for people, I think is a good, good idea. But I had two things, one, just a reflection and one quick question. So the reflection, and Pete, you, you kind of highlighted this or previewed this, it is exciting to see supportive environment go from average to more as a result of, you know, all the work that we've been doing around supporting our, our students, so that's great. The question about effective leaders, so just to be clear, that information all comes from teachers, there's no questions that cross over with students or parents, I guess we wouldn't have anyway? Okay.
No, and, and some of those questions continue to be problematic. Some of those questions have to do with, I have input on how the discretionary funds are spent at the school. Well, if you're in an elementary school and you have, you're handed your, you know, your supply budget at the beginning of school year, then you'd say, yeah, or one would hope you'd say, yeah. That's not the way that's done at the high school, so again, I think that's one of the areas. The other one is my principal, what is it, my principal knows what's going on in my classroom every day.
Oh, yeah.
There are things that just.
We've talked about.
Marcus, aren't you omniscient? Do you know everything?
There are also things, there are also things to think about, like, when you look at that score and you see it in the, whatever, whatever the number is, that if you look at the actual survey questions and you look at the responses, you may have eighty-five percent of people agreeing and strongly agreeing to something, but it's not weighted as much as another item. Or they, that item needs to be ninety-five percent for it to really count. So just to keep that in mind, that it, it's, it's always been a, a difficult score at the high school level, and they've made modifications to those questions, but as long as there are questions like that, will have a challenge.
And by the way, the survey's organized, we don't always know which leaders they're referring to, just by the nature of the tool.
Right, right. Thank you. So I, just one more.
Yes.
So given all this information, I think the important thing is, what is it that you're going to take away as the leaders to try and improve or tweak the performance to do better in categories where we can do better? And it looks like there's room for improvement, even in areas where we appear to have a relatively good score or an improved score.
I think one step we have initially talked about is, I'm gonna use a data word, Carrie, triangulating the data of this survey with other surveys and information that we have to really see how they fit and where they differ, and to really inform our practice moving forward. So this is just one piece of the whole. And so that's just, you know, one comment to, to just kind of get us started in what we, how we look at this and how we take the feedback and what we plan to do moving forward. But it is something that informs how we move forward with our leadership, as well as with instruction and the other areas that are reflected here.
So what's a priority for you in, when you look at this? What's your takeaway, and you say, well, this is first on the list for improvement?
One of the things I think I'd like to look at is the collaborative practices piece under teachers. You know, it, I, I look at that, and even though it's, it's at a fifty, I think that that can feed into our, our leadership category, and we can use things like those curriculum teams that are digging into data and looking at the curriculum reviews. I think that's a natural place, if we elevate that and continue to elevate that, we'll not only see growth in collaborative teachers, but we should probably see growth in the leadership piece as well.
Well, and a more consistent growth, because it looks like, you know, in twenty-fourteen, fifteen, that was at fifty-eight, then it was down to forty-six, and then back up to fifty, so it's, it's sort, so it'd be nice to see more of a clear up, or more.
More than average, yeah.
Right.
Exactly.
And I like the way you're pointing it out, because it's not a percentile, it's a scaled score. So, so, you know, the percentage might be seventy-eight percent for all we know, but what matters is what, you know, it's an apples-to-apples scaled score, and you're exactly right to word it that way.
And I think what you're saying, Marcus, about triangle, triangulating the data is really important. I think that's a, a value that we do with our kids, we should do, because I haven't done this survey in a couple of years, but I remember having a hard time answering some of the questions, because they're sort of like this, and you're like, well, in this class, it's really good, in this class, you know, like, so it's challenging to answer as a parent, I remember, so I'm sure that students and teachers have similar issues, because they're using this instrument across a huge swath of schools and students and families and, and teachers. So I think it's important to look at multiple measures to, to really, and this certainly being one of them.
And a lot of the questions seem to lend themselves a little more to elementary schools. That question about asking teachers, it's an item like, do you agree that my principal knows my curriculum and, and the lessons I'm teaching in my class? Well, that might be true in an elementary school with twenty teachers, but in a high school with two-hundred-and-fifty teachers and departments of forty-five people, I mean, you know, if the principal really does know that, apparently he's not doing any other job.
The other thing to consider is it's not just teachers who take the, who are reflected in the teacher count. We also have all of our parapros, take it, our counselors, social workers, psychs, so it, it is a variety of different folks who aren't necessarily under the, they're, they fall under for the surveys purposes, the teacher umbrella, but we also have quite a few parapros and.
So it's just, you're right.
It's much broader than we think.
The broad. I, I, I mean, it, it, it's very good information.
Yeah.
But, but you have to factor in that it's not really tailored to, specifically to a high school like ours.
But I must say, there are some strong numbers.
I think Echo has something to say, too.
Oh, I was gonna say, yeah, having taken it this year as well, it's also difficult because it's a very long survey, and everybody's trying to take it at the same time, so there's usually technical difficulties. So I know I had to take it like over fifteen times, try to load it. So I think that there are definitely things that get in the way of having like a very cohesive survey experience, so I think triangulating is definitely important.
And this is a, an aside, some of the questions don't seem quite developmentally appropriate, having had kids take it. One of my freshmen, I won't name which one, took it, and when the question around, we debate, and, and we basically argue meaning in science class, we discuss different, and this one, one of my freshmen argued vociferously that, no, it's science, there's one right answer. So I just answered, no, never. Thought it was a trick question. So anyway, the, the, some of that happens too, so you have to take into consideration who's ta, you know, what, what you bring to the table when you take.
And back to the triangulate, and maybe not triangulate, but you know, what, how do we factor this, which we, we should take seriously?
Yeah.
How do we factor this in with other, other ways we're collecting information?
Go ahead. Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for this information. We'll have this conversation again in a year.
Yes, we will.
All right. Yes, comments.
This is the Pete, this is the Pete Show tonight.
Comments from the public, yes.
Don't worry, I wasn't gonna let you leave.
Kind of what we're doing. Public comment?
Yes.
Okay. We have no public comment this evening.
I'm wondering why we're all looking at you.
My moment there.
We're just watching you.
We know you're a handsome guy, but that's not the only reason.
Feeling really good there for a second.
Very entertaining. Okay, so we're at item number nine. We have a few FOAs.
Yes, we have eleven FOAs in the response and packet.
Okay, thank you. All right, item number ten, board committee reports. Think we have a discipline committee?
Yeah, I, I do, it's, it's a short one. So discipline committee met on September tenth, this was their first meeting of the school year, and really just two items were discussed. A subcommittee was formed that will review the recommendations from the discipline categories from the study conducted last year. We've talked about this a couple of times around, you know, what exactly is disruptive acts or defiance of authority? So the action item for a recommendation to change for the twenty-twenty-one school year will be proposed after we dig deeper into replacing those two categories. So you'll hear more about that, but that will be the, one of the main items worked on this year. The other one, there was a summer project done for this past summer, of course, around e-cigarettes. So another subcommittee was formed to review the information that came out of that, that project for the summer, and then that will be used to inform our prevention programs going forward. So that was, that was it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right. So we're at student board report.
So it's a very exciting time in the school year, it's the beginning of the school year, I think it's roughly three weeks in. So the freshmen have stopped asking about room numbers and started asking about homecoming. And this past weekend was an ACT, so many of the juniors are taking their first standardized tests, and many of the seniors are taking their last standardized tests. Sports are in full swing, all grade levels are involved with that. We recently had the student activities fair, and there was a really great turnout, the energy was extremely high, and I know that the groups that I'm involved in got a lot, a lot of signups, and so it's great to see a lot of people of all grades and backgrounds showing up for the activities fair and getting involved in the school. And, yeah, the classes, people are getting engaged in their classes, AP classes have started up, paces are quick, and I know that many students who have not taken AP classes before are learning the rigor that AP involves, and a lot of juniors are experiencing that right now. That's what I've got.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. All right, Dr. Witherspoon.
Echo, as I listen to you, I happen to think, William, we have to get some video of that activities fair next year. I, I don't even know how to describe it, it was Beardsley Gym, it was filled with clubs and activities around the perimeter, down the middle, hundreds of students every lunch period. It, it was an event. And, and, and it was pretty exciting, because it was all about our students getting involved. And as you said, I mean, I think at each table, they were signing people up pretty heavily. So anyway, I, I didn't have that on my list, but after you said, we gotta remember that next year. It, it, we've been doing it a few years, but wow, I mean, it, it's just really turning into something. So my report is, I sort of want to begin by giving kudos to Pat Monsell, who's sitting by me. She has been recognized by the Illinois Association of School Boards as a master board member for her participation in training and, and activities through the School Board Association, and it recognizes her service to the public education community and contributions to IASB leadership activities. So, Pat, congratulations. We do have upcoming events. One of them is, this is kind of to the public out there, our first campus tour day will be this Saturday, September twenty-first, but you can go online and find out information about them, there's a whole series of them scheduled throughout the year. People who do go on these tours truly ra, I mean, you're thinking, tour a public school? They rave about these tours, so I just want to put a plug into folks, if you're interested, there may be still some room on, on, on this Saturday, but for sure, as you look ahead to your schedules, I would encourage you to do that. Want to give a wonderful shout-out to fa, our fan, our Family Action Network, and to our host extraordinaire, Dr. Marcus Campbell.
Yes.
Wow. He has done more than a couple of these now. But we have a couple of good ones coming up. We have Emily Brazelon, who is going to do Charge, the New Movement to Transform American Prosecution and End Mass Incarceration. That's on September the twenty-sixth. And we have one on October fourth, The Water Dancer, and it's Another Evening with Tanishi Coats. So would really encourage folks to check both of those out. We're getting to the point now that we fill our fifteen-hundred seat auditorium for, for some of these fan events. I mean, these have really turned into like regional events. So I, again, keep your eye peeled, I'll be announcing them, but fan is something else. We are one of the active partners in it. We contribute towards it. It's an amazingly good investment on our part, our students, our staff, our community. We all benefit from, from these wonderful presentations. YAMO is back. This is the sixty-second annual, year, annual production of YAMO. Like, wow, you know, amazing. It's going to kick off its performances on October fourth. It runs over three consecutive weekends. I'm not going to put in a huge plug because I think most of those are already all sold out. In fact, go ahead, Marcus.
YAMO sold out in one day.
In one day, right. So unless we're getting some cancellations or some tickets returned, but can you imagine? Wouldn't Broadway love that? If, if all of their, all of their shows, productions sold out in one day? Go Kits. Couple other reminders. We do have a wider range of academic and well-being support programs at the school. And this, again, is kind of putting the word out. I would really encourage students and parents, go to our webpage, find the, the poll down there called Places to Go. It's where our students and parents can find a wealth of resources from our homework center to our college and career services, to our counseling office, to our health center, to our academic supports. It is worth the stop on our webpage at the Places to Go. And parents, if, if you're wanting more for your child, you know, of course, all three of my children were so good to whatever was available, they just pursued it and did it without me. But if maybe your child needs a little bit of encouragement, and actually mine did, it's a great way for parents to say, hey, have you checked out AM Support? Have you checked out, you know, the homework center, whatever it may be. Homecoming kicks off next Monday, the Homecoming Week, September twenty-third. We're gonna have the big game then, a week from Friday, and the Homecoming Dance a week from Saturday on September twenty-eighth. And you can get more information on the website. And our Homecoming Dance is always a big one, goodness gracious. I mean, we'll have like oftentimes twelve, fifteen hundred students at, at a Homecoming Dance. It's, it's really something. And finally, sign up for Fall Conferences will begin on Monday, September twenty-third, next Monday. They're gonna be held on October third in the afternoon and then continuing into the evening. And a reminder that October third is a non-attendance, I think that's, no, I guess it is, right. October third is the non-attendance day for students, and then we have a late start on October fourth. I'd like to put in one more plug. If there's a single student in the world who actually is listening to us, and certainly if there are any parents listening to us. When we have a late start like that, everybody has more than an extra hour to get to school. But everybody's out of their routine. So all of a sudden, everybody's converging, you know, it, it just not spread out the way normally. I mean, we had traffic jams. We had, had people, you know, waiting for a bus that was a little later than they should have waited for. You know, she got, should have been on an earlier bus and the like. So I want to put in a plug, just because it's a little more than an hour more before you have to get in. Kind of think in advance about, I mean, the school's open at the regular time. I don't expect you to come at eight, although, or even seven-thirty, although a lot of kids were here. But more importantly, allow more time so that you can be in first period on time. And that, sorry to take so long tonight, concludes my report.
Thank you. Great advice. Okay, wonderful.
Mary's ready.
Mary.
Mary, you're on before ten o'clock at night. Oh, my gosh.
All right. So we ready?
I was just gonna say, it's nice to see you all before the nine o'clock hour.
That's true. So the hearing for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget for Evanston Township High School is now called to order. The first order of business is the acceptance of the notice of publication.
Thank you, President Savage Williams. On August first, twenty nineteen, the Notice of Public Hearing for the final budget was published, and the notice of publication was included in your packet.
Can I have a motion to accept the notice of publication of the budget hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Out of the room.
Evanston?
Yes.
Monsell?
Yes.
Carson?
Yes.
Roll with?
Yes.
To Parish?
Yes.
Savage, Rollin?
Yes, thank you. The next order of business is a short presentation of the budget by our own CFO, Ms. Mary Rodino.
Thank you. So I'm all discombobulated because it's eight-thirty, but. So I have thirty slides, but, but full disclosure, these, I know, I know, I all, but I always have thirty slides and you've never noticed, right?
You just didn't tell us.
Right. I mean, how many slides could I have of the three-hundred-page budget? So I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on each one because most of them are the same as what we talked about in June. All of the board members have been through it at this point, and so I will go quickly through some of them. And I think my plan is to really try to point out to you the changes from the June budget and then some things maybe along the way that just are different than some of the things we've seen in the past. So that's my plan, but I do want to say that if you, rather than just waiting until the end to take questions, if you have any questions, especially if I'm kind of moving through some of the slides, I won't be offended. Please feel free to just stop me in the middle, I can go back, or we can talk about something along the way if that works for you all. So we generally ta, start with an overview, talk about some of the revenues, expenditures, look at some of the funds in a little bit of detail, and then talk about the financial plan, especially a Plan B. I, I do feel like a broken record sometimes because I think most of the threats and environmental things that we have in the state and federal funding are the same things we've been talking about for a while. So we always talk a little bit about the state budget, some economic concerns, and there, I knew I was gonna miss one. It says tentative budget overview, forgot to change that one to final. I think I caught the rest of them, but there's always one. So nothing new here. The state did pass a budget in early June. This is the third year of what's called evidence-based funding, which replaced general state aid, some of you may remember. I did add a little detail here, you might remember that in the spring, the state did away with the six percent allowable end-of-career TRS increases. They scaled that back to three percent, which honestly would be problematic for a lot of districts. If you have a teacher who's still on a salary scale, in some years, they could have larger regular increases than three percent. And so it would have put a lot of districts into a penalty situation. Not in all cases, but certainly in some, depending on the individual teacher. The state has sort of backtracked now, and right now, we were never at risk for a penalty anytime soon because the state was grandfathering any contract that was existing at that time. And our teacher's contract does go through twenty-twenty-one, but the state has since stepped back a little bit on what could cause a district to experience a penalty. I will say that, that those end-of-year increases are pretty common through the state, but over the last four or so years in talking to all of my peers, especially on the North Shore, we are one of the few districts who only has two years of that end-of-career increase, where some districts have four or five years of that. So there, some, you know, there are some contracts that are much more costly to districts at the end of careers. So I, I think the penalty thing is, is sort of not an issue for now, so we'll see what happens. But we do have a contract in place until twenty-twenty-one. Haven't heard much about property tax freezes, but I, I think we probably will at some point. I, I, I don't ever think it's a done deal. I think we'll hear more about that this fall. The good news is, go ahead.
Once the governor created that task force of like eighty people, or is it eight hundred? It, the writing's on the wall. There's not a task force that's expected to come up with no recommendation. So we just need to know that, that, that there's something, I believe, on the horizon.
The, the good news is, I, I personally had my fingers crossed that it just wouldn't happen during the time when we were seeing the end of one of the larger TIFs in Evanston. And even though a property tax freeze wouldn't necessarily affect our revenues that result from the end of that TIF, you never know what could have been introduced in that legislation. So I'm happy that we've made it through. Evanston doesn't have any TIF districts rolling off anytime soon that would be any significant income to other taxing districts, so. Still not sure about pushing down some of the pension costs to the districts. You know, it's always on the back burner in my mind, and we'll talk about that a little bit later as well. The state budget, as I mentioned, we're now under a program called evidence-based funding. The payments are on time, but we haven't seen any additional money. We haven't seen any loss of money either. Some of the categorical state aid payments do have some lag, but we, we've been saying that same thing for the last five years at least, probably. The corporate property replacement tax, which is this mystical tax to me for the last twenty years I've been hearing about it. But it, but it's a nice, it's a nice amount of money for the district. There is no guarantee of it being funded in the future, so we always kind of approach it cautiously. The nice thing is usually in the summer before the year starts, we do get a guaranteed confirmation of what that will be. And the increase of this corporate property replacement tax since we came to you in June, there has been a confirmed amount that is two hundred thousand dollars higher than what we thought it would be. So that has been the only change in the final budget from the tentative is an overall two hundred thousand dollar increase because of this revenue. So as I mentioned, always thinking about pension cost shifts as a probability and property tax freezes. We did talk about this in June, and we'll be talking about it again when I come back in November for the tax levy. The, the tax levy increases by whatever this particular consumer price index basis for that year. Just a few years ago, we were seeing point seven and point eight, so that makes two point one and one point nine sound pretty good. In Cook County, our taxes are a combination of two years of levies, so, two years of CPIs. So two point one and one point nine, we'll be looking at about a two percent increase when we go to do our next tax levy. State and Chicago are still not in a good bond rating status. ETHS has maintained its triple-A rating, I, I think it's eight or ten years, I don't remember. Eric probably knows.
At least eight might be ten, right?
And we probably will be looking to issue some debt in the spring to fund next summer's capital projects, so we'll talk to you about that later this fall as well. This is very similar to information that we talked about in June. The, I missed another tentative, sorry. The final budget is ninety point six million dollars. That includes everything we have, including capital. And the increase from the tentative budget in June is the two hundred thousand dollars that I mentioned. So that equaled out, we had some additional expenses that we became aware of, so they were about the same amount. So I've budgeted two hundred thousand dollars on the revenue and expense side. And as I said, this includes all the funds, which includes what we call non-operating, so bond and interest, which is our debt payments, IMRF and capital. So when we talk about operating funds, we're really talking about education fund, operations and maintenance, transportation. And so that's just over seventy-nine point four million, so those are the funds we use on an everyday basis. That's about a four percent increase from last year, and that's partly because of increased personnel costs from contract obligations plus expected revenues from the Washington National TIF, which at this point, we're hoping to use for our capital program at least until anything could come down from the state regarding those pension costs. So as always, we try to use a conservative rest, revenue estimate. You know, we didn't increase that corporate property replacement tax until we had confirmation that that would be increasing a little bit. Evidence-based funding, we expect that to continue to be flat as, along with the categorical state and federal aid. It's been pretty flat, some slight decreases in some of the state grants. Sometimes there's a little carryover that we can use. So everything was, in, in a good way, it was flat, right? It didn't decrease, but we also didn't see a lot of additional revenues in the way of grants that will be coming in this year. So as I mentioned, the property taxes that we'll levy for in December will be a blend of two years. That'll equal out to about two percent. And we never know about that corporate property replacement tax. A state could really, you know, decide to do anything. I haven't heard anything that will happen, but I'll give you an example of some things that can happen. In our transportation fund, every year we do transportation claim. And so the only, we don't have regular school bus service, so typically the, the real reimbursement comes from special ed transportation. So this year, when we were doing that return in August, it was about the same. Our costs go down, have gone down a little bit in transportation every year. So I filled out the claim, and, and it's all on the state's website. And when I got to the end, I noticed that the proposed reimbursement was much smaller. But our costs really hadn't changed much. So the state has in, at the very bottom, a line that they call proration. And that's when they take what they owe you and they prorate it. And so we could see something like that happen with the corporate personal property replacement tax. They could say we're entitled to a certain amount, and instead of cutting that allotment, there will be a proration. They did it a few years ago with some of the categorical aids, I think it was some of the special ed aid, I can't remember. But things just come up and we don't always know about them. So I'm looking at the, at the transportation fund, and I had to just sort of look at what we expected in the property tax revenues and make sure that our budget was still okay. So that's what we sometimes deal with in an unexpected way. Equalized assessed valuation, I don't want to spend too much time on that because it's important to remember that the district levies for a dollar amount. So even though some of the EAVs change in Evanston, there's a triennial reassessment that will affect the tax bills. We don't necessarily gain because someone's reassessment goes up. We levy for a dollar amount, and that dollar amount can only be a certain percentage above what we levied the previous year. So I just wanted to point that out. Student fees, we did not propose or enact any student fee changes this year. Summer school fees were last raised in twenty, summer twenty-seventeen, so when I came to you in June, we were talking about summer twenty-nineteen. There was no increase. A couple of years ago, we talked about a parking fee increase, so we decided to do that in two phases. Well, we talked about it, and we did the first phase. So my tentative plan for the twenty-twenty-one school year would be to raise those parking fees by fifty dollars a year. We are still the bargain on the North Shore. Some places limit to parking to one semester of the two so that they can spread it out a little, but everyone is a lot more money. And, and I have to tell a quick story. I was in a school district that will go unnamed to the north of us, that you're very familiar with, Pat.
Thank you.
And I, I was at the, the one fast food restaurant that exists, I think, in Winnetka. And there was a sign in the door for a private person that was offering a parking space to a student of that certain school district to the north, in their driveway, I believe. And it was eighteen hundred dollars a semester. So, so we're, we're two hundred and fifty, so, so just to keep that in perspective. I took a picture of it and sent it all to my fellow administrators, like, look at this. So I was trying to figure out if I knew anyone around here who could make some money doing that, but. So real quickly, just the, the point of this slide is just to really show you that of our revenues, property taxes are by far our biggest source, and we are thankful for that, for everyone who does pay into those property taxes. And we feel like we try to be really responsible with those dollars, but, but that's really our bread and butter. And we'll talk about expenses in a second, I'll show you a pie chart for that. As always, we just like to mention that we always think about values-based budgeting when we do this process every year. We've been trying where we can to tweak and reduce some contractual supplies. And sometimes those shift one way or another as we reclassify expenses to where, what, what is appropriate for those expense labels, if you will. And personnel attrition, we, we do gain some dollars in most years with retirements. Our HR department did a great job this. year of bringing in quality teachers, uh, but they also were teachers who, um, do save some money as other, um, more, uh, tenured staff do retire, uh, at their salary levels. So, that's always helpful. But we all, we have been, um, really conscious in maintaining staffing levels and adding where appropriate based on increases in headcount, as you all know, we've, we've had in the last few years, headcount of students, I mean. Um, so regarding expenses, between our salaries and fringe benefits, that is about 77% of our overall budget. So, again, by far, those are, um, that's where we spend the most dollars. And, and again, it goes back to quality and, and adequate levels of staff. Salaries overall increased about 2.63% due to employment contracts. Um, like I said, there were some FTE adds because of higher enrollment over the last few years. And also, um, with the onset of the ETHS day school, we now have people in salary lines who, um, you know, it created additional positions, and so we have extra dollars in salary lines where we used to pay those dollars in a tuition line to an off-campus placement. Fringe benefits overall are increasing by four percent, but again, that additional headcount would affect that number. It doesn't mean that each person's benefit cost was increasing by four percent. In fact, I think we've been really lucky that those have been pretty stable over the years. Uh, supplies and materials decreased by almost two percent. Purchase services did increase by 11%, but those were mostly through reclassifications of things that maybe had been supplies and materials. You'll see overall, the budget really didn't increase by a lot, so it's not like any of those particular line items were excessive, I don't think. Um, capital outlay, this does not include what's in the actual capital improvements fund, increased by 3.4%, and that does fluctuate from year to year, depending on some of the, um, mechanical project, projects and things that need to be done in the operations department. Our tuition line, which is what we pay to other districts, is expected to decrease by 22%, and that is that trade-off for the day school, uh, and bringing students back into our district and increasing our salary and benefits to do that. And in addition, we, in general, we've also just had less students off-campus as well, so it's not just because of that. Um, so, in the education fund overall, there's a 4.3% increase over fiscal 19. That's probably a little higher than we normally see. But again, I just want to remind you that, um, as that TIF rolled off, right now, we've accounted for that excess, um, property tax revenue in the education fund with the intent to transfer it to the capital fund. So, I think, um, a good goal would be to try to use those, um, additional funds for capital, uh, only until, or I should say, only until if, I know that doesn't make sense, but if the pension shift comes down from the state, then we've got that money that we haven't rolled into our operating budget, uh, that we could then start directing towards that liability. So, I think it's good to try not to use that sort of money, um, as something to increase our operating budget. Eric, you want to add?
And I just really want to reiterate, uh, parts of this school are nearing 100 years old, and the new parts are 50 years old. And, uh, and that's where we are truly capped and truly underfunded, and we just have to take care of, of this investment for this community and for our students. And, uh, uh, you know, it is not, uh, frivolous of us or, or misdirecting money to, to direct it to, to the, the capital. Uh, that's something that is going to be a concern of ours and of school boards to come forever in Evanston, unless something changes on the tax caps, because we just cannot generate enough money to keep a building of this age, uh, going and making it a, a 21st century learning environment at the same time. So, as you look around, I think we can be very proud of what we've been doing. I mean, it, 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 it's pretty significant, but, uh, but that challenge is simply not going to go away.
I think, in my opinion, if we were to try to keep up on all the maintenance, it probably would be about $7 million a year. And, and that would include a few million for capital projects like we typically do, but it, it does seem to be endless here. There's always a window leaking. There's always, uh, windows that don't work. There's, there's always a leak somewhere. I, I, so, I, I really want to encourage us to really try to use that money for, um, the really mundane types of things, because it's hard. You want to, you want to build a chemphys lab. You want to build a ceramics lab. You want to build an entrance three. But, um, we, we have a lot of need for just really, um, maintaining the building. And I'll give you an example. We're, we're still sort of battling some leaks in the new showpiece that is entrance three. And, and all of the parties together have been really great about pledging to make sure that we, I mean, they've, the leaks have been indexed, and they're in a Google Doc, and they're being addressed separately. But it's interesting, there are things that we never would have thought of where parts of, parts of the entrance three that used to be exterior, water might have run down that brick every time it rained. Who would have noticed? And now, some of those areas are inside, and so as much as they've tried to tuck point areas, it's still, you know, 50-plus years old. So, we are addressing it. Sometimes you fix one leak and the water runs, runs a foot to the south, so. Um, but I, I never had any idea of how complicated capital needs are here. So, this is my, this will be my fourth year, um, over that area, and it's, it, it, it's something different every year. So, bear with us, please. If there's a garbage can in entrance three, we're working on it. So, um, so, while we're talking, did you want to say something, Pat?
No.
Okay. So, and there are sometimes garbage cans in it. If it's closed, that's because there's like three garbage cans in entrance three. But I think it's getting better and better. So, while we're talking about the education fund, let me just kind of highlight some of the changes. So, that $200,000 that I spoke about in corporate property replacement tax, that is an increase in the ed fund. Um, and, and I swear, I did not plan it that we were at like 69.8 million, and that 200,000 took us to an even 70, but I like round numbers. Um, so, the offset for that money, I noticed that there, um, had been an under-budgeted amount in, uh, world language parapros. I think that was a little confusion because some of them had been covered by the Title III grant, and then that Title III grant partially got rolled into evidence-based funding. And so, anyway, I noticed that the budget was pretty short on our, uh, world languages parapros, and, uh, sorry, bilingual parapros. And then, um, the rest of the changes were really more, um, minor changes. There was an increase in avid tutors. I had tried to sneak in a little cut there, and they caught me on that. So, so, just reinstating some of the things that I had tried to reduce based on usage last year. Um, and then, uh, there was a position that had been added in our, um, PE department to, uh, man the new weight and cardio room, because now that is really a destination for students every day, every period of every day. And so, there was a position that, um, is now actually staffing that room. And so, those were the kinds of things that, that extra $200,000 was used to cover. So, the operations and maintenance fund, uh, so, let me just say, the education fund is the only one that had a change from the tentative budget. So, everything else, uh, these are all numbers that you've seen before. But in the operations fund, I just wanted to mention overall, 2.4 increase, 2.4% increase, and that is probably pretty good considering there are a lot of, uh, unionized employees in that fund. And so, we do have some contractual salary increases for them. I also want to mention, this is something that you saw back in the spring, but, uh, we used to have basically a one-person contractor who was working on our grounds with our two grounds, uh, employees. And last spring, we did, uh, bring to the board and ask you to approve, uh, a much beefier, if you will, landscaping contract, because they just weren't able to keep up with it. Plus, the one-person contractor said that he couldn't do it anymore. It was just too much for one person. So, we did engage those services of a large-scale landscaping company. They have two people here every day, and that did result in an increase of about $150,000 to that operations, uh, grounds budget. So, in addition, it, it actually increased by about 170, because we, we're seeing plantings and sod and all those, um, seasonal things go up. So, that was probably the largest increase in the operations and maintenance fund from last year. Uh, the rest of these, tort fund, bond and interest, those are really all standard increases. Transportation fund, I always, I already mentioned to you that we're going to see some reductions in the reimbursement from the state for that, but I still, I think we'll still be fine. Um, IMRF fund, uh, which is also social security fund, just increased a very small amount from last year. Capital fund, um, my plan is to come back to you in October, a little bit earlier than last year. We will have an allocation of $5 million, uh, probably in debt next spring, but it won't be spent in one year. Typically, that's a two-year cycle for that debt. Um, as always, instruction's a top priority. Uh, we're always, uh, looking to maintain that reasonable student-teacher ratio. I think we've maintained it or even bettered it in the last few years, I believe. And, um, I don't remember the last time this district laid off an employee. Uh, certainly, there's been attrition, and we did do an early retirement program about eight or 10 years ago, but, uh, I, I don't, I don't, I think we've been very successful at not having to do layoffs, and I don't know that there are a lot of districts that can say that in the last 10 years. So, I mentioned capital expenditures. Those are a priority. Uh, when we talked about this in June, we were just opening our day school. Uh, we're continuing to use wellness strategies to try and get employees to participate in that. And I think we're always looking for reorganizations of whatever it is, departments, structures, um, as, as needed and, and whatever makes sense. Already talked about tax freezes, and that's it. See, that was 30 slides. That didn't seem like 30 slides, did it? Uh, I think that's all I have. I don't know if there are any other questions.
Excellent. I think it's great. It's so informative.
Marcus told me it was interesting. I felt special. I just assume everyone's bored to tears.
All right. Um, board questions? Anybody?
I just wanted to make a comment. So, Mary, I know, we, we teased you about the length of the board packet and, and the slides, but, um, you know, we, I think I can speak for everybody here, just how amazed we are that you continue to do such an incredible job of, um, representing our values and, and balancing budgets and staying at triple A. I mean, these are things that are unheard of at other school districts. So, um, we are forever indebted to you and your team, and then all the, the folks that you work with throughout the school to make this happen every year. So, you know, it seems, oh, yeah, again, we got an award. Oh, again, it's a balanced budget. But that's not to be, you know, we tease you, but that's not to be joked about. That's really impressive. So, I, I am eternally grateful to you for that, because this would be a harder job if we were looking at really difficult cuts. Um, and, and you just, again and again, come back to us with, um, a really strong budget that represents our values and keeps us in check, so.
I don't ever want to be in that position where I come to you. Well, first, I'd have to go to Eric, so I don't want to be in that position. But, um, you know, I, I had, uh, I just want to say, I mean, I, I take credit for it to a point, but I did come into this job in really good shape with gigantic shoes to fill, as you all know from Bill Stafford. Um, but thankfully, I had worked with him for so long here and at the city that, um, sometimes I, I see him in me, and that scares me a little, because he was a little cranky, especially at the end. But that's okay. But, but, you know, I inherited a really good spot and, and supportive administrators, and we all beat each other a little bit, uh, beat each other up a little bit sometimes. Um, but everybody, we all work really well together, and, and I, I, you know, you can only beat people up so much. You've got to really have a joint effort, and so I feel really lucky that, um, we have that, uh, relationship. I had a lot of budget meetings this year with people, um, like department heads, not necessarily administrators, um, that I hadn't really met within a while. And we really talked about, okay, let's look at this. Let's look at this over time. What's necessary? Who, who's staffing detention after school? You know, can, can we talk about what's needed? What's, what's a luxury? What's a necessity? And so, it was, it was good. We hadn't really had those conversations in a while, and I think it helps open up some, some of the thought processes moving forward, too. I think they welcomed it, and I think I welcomed it. So, it's definitely a group effort. It's great. So, thank you.
I appreciate those comments, Pat. I think that as I was going through this packet for the entire weekend.
300 pages. Sorry.
Like, the full weekend.
While it was 85 outside.
Right. I know. It was such a beautiful day, but, um...
You could take it out, you know, on your patio or something.
Yeah. I, it, what, what struck me was how well you know the school. So, how well you know the values, and how well you know the school department by department. And even a, as you gave your presentation, that was clear, that you know it.
Thank you.
You know what we, what we are looking for. You anticipated. I've got a few questions. You answered my questions in your presentation, so I don't feel in, I need to, to ask these questions, so.
Thank you.
So, you make it, you make it so understandable.
My staff makes fun of me, because they, they say that I know everything off the top of my head. And I tell them, when you've been here 13 years, you'll know it all off the top of your head. I mean, it, it just, it helps. You know, I've never, I, I've not been anywhere 13 years. And, um, we were just talking about it the other day, that it seems like, um, like when I was at the city, my responsibilities changed every three years, and you just start to get to know things, and things change. But I feel fortunate that I was in the assistant CVO position for 10 years.
True.
And that sounds like it could be a stagnant thing, but you guys know how often things change here. And so, but I felt like I, I was in enough of the details that it, it sort of just comes to me. And, you know, people who don't speak in front of boards or speak in the public a lot will often say to me, oh, isn't that intimidating, you know? And I'm like, by the time we get to the board meeting, I could just, you know, ramble it off, really, because at that point, it, it's all kind of second nature. So, I appreciate, um, all of your comments, and I, I do try not to spew too many numbers, because I know they can be boring. So, I try to kind of make it where I can talk about situations rather than just the numbers, and, um, kind of help you see what our days are like, I guess. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Oh, I think I was supposed to say something else. Like, um, thank you, Ms. Modino. Um, anyway, that's, that's fine. Okay, moving right along. We are at action items. The first item is approval of the final fiscal year 2019-20 budget. Could I get a motion, please?
So moved. Second?
Roll call, please.
Walden?
Yes.
Woodin?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Carson?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. The next item is approval of final fiscal year 2019-20 Park School budget. Motion, please?
So moved. Second?
Roll call, please.
Can we?
Um, Mary, in your, in the material that was in the packet, you said you could expand a little bit about, um, what appears to me may be a problem going forward.
It, and it was a little convoluted, so it was a little hard for me to explain it in a couple paragraphs, but, um, I'll try to make it as short as I can. Uh, part of the issue is that District 65 is on a cash basis of accounting, and we're on an accrual basis. Um, I personally think accrual basis is the best, because if you get a payment in July, and it's for, in this case, um, a student's tuition in June to attend a school, you just make a quick entry, and you get to count it in, in the year in which you had the expense. District 65 does not work that way. So, um, CPS has, has not been particularly timely in paying for their students that they have at Park School. So, if they have a student who attended there through June, and they don't pay until August, um, that goes to the following year. So, in this case, that's what happened. The good news is, um, that my counterpart at District 65 does have a lot of contacts at CPS, and so I think that he, um, has tried to kind of work into a better payment plan with them for the upcoming year. But what has happened is the money that they received in August goes toward the year that we just started. And so, it makes our contribution that's required less, because they got this, I'm just going to say, windfall. But what's going to happen in November, when they settle up their 18-19 school year at District 65 for Park School, is they're going to be expecting an additional amount from District 202. So, it's sort of moving money around, if you will, um, because it makes the 19-20 picture look better. It makes their revenues look really good. But part of that money that's coming in in 1920 is money that they were owed last year. So, our contribution for 1920 is less, but my estimate, and their estimate, for what they're going to do for us in November to make up for the fact that CPS didn't pay by June 30th, is about $178,000. So, it's six and one half dozen of another. Uh, we, uh, we have really honest conversations and very frank conversations with them about revenues and expenses every time we meet. And, and I think they, they, there's not any disagreement there between any of us, but the way that they have to account for it is just different. But the way that they have to account for it is just different.
Are they ever gonna change their accounting system?
No, and, and there are districts who are on a cash basis. I, I'm not sure of the reasoning. It's probably easier, because what's in the door June thirtieth is all you have to deal with. Where we're looking back at July and August, um, transactions and having to pick which year they belong to. So probably not.
Okay, thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Thank you for that information. Um, there is a motion on the table.
Mm-hmm.
Roll call, please.
Livingston?
Yes.
Gonzal?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rolwitz?
Yes.
Teterich?
Yes.
Roble?
Yes.
Sanders Williams?
Yes. Next item, approval of resolution to approve real estate purchase and sale agreement for eighteen twenty-four Emerson Street.
So moved. Second?
Roll call, please.
Gonzal?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rolwitz?
Yes.
Teterich?
Yes.
Walde?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Savage Williams?
Yes. Next item, approval of commercial athletic sponsorship.
So moved.
Second?
Roll call, please.
I just, I just want to, um, raise an issue that I raised, um, in some emails ahead of time on this, on the subject of the sponsorship. So, um, it's, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the situation is that we have a, a deal with a TV station to do filming of, of football or some of our sporting events, which sounds, sounds great. Uh, don't have a problem with that. And as part of that arrangement with the TV station, we then are somehow obligated to have the TV station's sponsors appear at those athletic events or have a table. And, uh, you know, the details were totally clear, but we did some emails and clarified that. Um, and so, for example, we will have Oakden with a table at our events, which sounds terrific. I, I, again, have no problem with that. Um, but one of the sponsors that, that specifically called out in this, um, memo that we got is the Verdoliak Law Group. Um, and I raised some questions related to the Verdoliak Law Group. Um, I've got a variety of problems with entering into an agreement with a TV station, um, which allows their sponsors to then appear on our property. You know, I get that we can't dictate who the sponsors of the TV station are gonna be. And they've obviously come to some, some arrangement. And Verdoliak Law Group is welcome to advertise on the, on the TV station's webpage or TV stations or whatever. Um, but I think we cross a line when we allow those sponsors to show up and set up a table on ETHS property. And I, regardless of who that particular sponsor is, I have a problem with that, because I think we, we sort of open and, we leave this open-ended, um, arrangement whereby if a TV station, you know, might have a, you know, and I, I could parade a list of horribles, right? A, a gun seller, um, a political organization, um, which would not normally be allowed on school property, et cetera, et cetera. So there's lots of those kinds of sponsors that we sort of open the door to here. With respect to Verdoliak in particular, I have some issues. I think, um, anybody out there could Google Ed Verdoliak and figure out the, the problem, the legal troubles that he's had over the years, including relatively recently. Um, associating his firm, um, with our school, I don't think is a smart decision. And, um, you know, it's a law firm, frankly, that could end up on the other side of a legal matter with ETHS. So I don't know why we'd want to have them set up a table on our grounds, um, to potentially solicit. And there are lots of limitations on how lawyers are allowed to solicit. You can't solicit individual clients. Um, and I think we run the risk that we're allowing that to happen. Or it could be seen as an endorsement of the Verdoliak Law Group. Um, so for all those reasons, I'm really concerned. It sounds like you don't feel there's a way out. We, we had some email exchanges on this before the meeting. Um, but I've got some real discomfort with that particular arrangement. I would prefer that we find a way to have this television arrangement without the presence of that firm in our property. So for that reason, I'll probably vote no on the pending motion. I will vote no. Didn't mean to sound wishy-washy there.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table, correct? Right? So we could, could we have a roll call, please?
Parsons?
Yes.
Rolwitz?
Yes.
Teterich?
Yes.
Walde?
Yes.
Livingston?
No.
Gonzal?
Yes.
Savage Williams?
Yes. Thank you. Next item, designation of thirty-five thousand dollar donation to automotive technology training for the electric car kit.
So moved. Second?
Roll call, please.
Rolwitz?
Yes.
Teterich?
Yes.
Walde?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Gonzal?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Savage Williams?
Yes. Next item is the consent agenda, and I'm gonna pull out the personnel agenda from that. We'll do that separately. So the consent agenda, which includes approval of athletic equipment contract, which includes the weight and cardio rooms, um, alternate bid, the approval of purchase of multi-function school activity bus, uh, MFSAB, approval of minutes from August twelfth, two thousand nineteen, closed session minutes or meeting, um, August twelfth, two thousand nineteen, regular meeting, September third, two thousand nineteen, closed session meeting, September third, two thousand nineteen, special meeting, treasurer's report from two thousand nineteen and approval of bills. So that's all we'll do for now. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second?
Roll call, please.
Teterich?
Yes.
Walde?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Gonzal?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rolwitz?
Yes.
Savage Williams?
Yes. And so now the personnel agenda, which includes appointment to staff, certified support staff, nutrition services, change in status, uh, which includes SOWI adjustment, educational overloads, stipend, FAS, honorarium, mentors and instructional coaches, leave of absence, uh, both maternity and paternity certified and support staff, resignation certified and retirement support staff. Can we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Walde?
Yes.
Livingston?
Abstain.
Gonzal?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rolwitz?
Yes.
Teterich?
Yes.
Savage Williams?
Yes. Okay, um, old and new business. Does anybody have anything to present? No? Then could we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 This meeting is adjourned.